Conference will now be recorded.
Okay, hi everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. Tonight is the regular Board of Trustees December 2nd meeting at 5 o'clock. Can we call the meeting to order, please?
Call the roll, please. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Here.
Mr. Molly?
Here.
Simko?
Here. We'll stay after the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any questions on the minutes from last month, you guys? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is that on both of them?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. Just one thing on the addition or deletions of the jet. I think what Dave wanted to propose with you guys, if that's okay, if we just on the fiscal officer with the light quotes, resolutions, if he lets you have any particular questions on the resolutions. You wanted to just do a
I wondered if we could just kind of do I'll call the resolution numbers and then not go into detail on them. Now, because we've all seen them and had a chance to look and it might move our meeting along.
Are you guys okay with that? Okay, alright. Alright, Rob, come on down. Oh, and by the way, excuse me, for for Austin, Greg and Julie, thanks for coming tonight. We're gonna wait, if you, if that's okay, at the 5:30 meeting is when they're gonna be discussing the zone change for this evening, so that starts at 5:30, so I'll keep you nice for just a few more minutes. Thank you. Hey, Rob.
I have one item, a resolution 25-189, this is the annual stormwater resolutions of joint cooperation agreement township to receive funding from the stormwater utility. These are the projects that the township pays for and we that apply to our MS4 permit. They pick up the ditch cleans, things like that. It's an annual agreement. They, they stretch out for two years, very nice, the annual so this is the 26-27. Then you just scroll down, the amendments attached or the operation agreements attached. And it's in the amount of, keep scrolling. Go on, it's the last page. There is $210,000 a year. We have requested additional funding over the last several years, the legislature I had wrote letters and emails requesting to county engineer to increase that funding based on the size of Savannah Township and the amount of activities that we perform for the MS4 permit versus the other communities who do receive the same amount of money. Other communities receive less, but there are other communities that receive the same amount of loss that are 25 to 30% smaller and have less road knowledge, but they have less road ownership. We have not heard back. Just wanted to give you
We hear anything back on Northwoods, on that creek back there with McGowan's subdivision?
Have not heard back from that. They did do a survey on the ditch. I think they have developed the plan and they're waiting to implement. The temporary is gonna be part of the term off petition money. Right.
Okay. Any questions besides that for Rob, you guys? I'll offer a resolution 25-189 to participate in the joint agreement for 26-27 drainage.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. Thanks, Rob. Hi, Chris.
I just have one resolution for consideration. That's 25-200. Organization purchase one fire engine through the source one cooperating purchasing program.
Think we just heard about that a little bit ago.
Yeah.
Any questions that Chris had already presented?
I just, I did see that it's approximately 36 months before it would be completed. Is that kind of changed, do you think, or?
Sadly, that's the industry standard right now. That's why there's a better sophistication going on. I don't know if that's gonna change between now and then, but that's what the contractual sadly, it's the world that we've had to redevelop a couple of years ago. We had to since COVID, redevelop this whole replacement schedule. The KME that's referenced in here is actually 2009. You know, 15 years is frontline and five years is reserve status. By the time we receive this, that one's gonna be you know, and, you know, as they age, the maintenance cost goes
I'm sure, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a second on this motion?
I'll make, how about I make a resolution? I'll offer a resolution 25-200 to purchase a fire truck. Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. Thanks, Chris. Sarah, come on down.
Hello.
Hi, Sarah.
I have two resolutions for you tonight. The previous eligibility list for police officer has been exhausted. So, resolution 25-195 is going to do to certify the eligibility list that we got from the process of the accepted applications in October from around the beginning to early of October. This is the eligibility list that
Questions? I'll offer resolution 25-195, an eligibility list for hiring of police officers.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, our opinion that we fall into the next resolution is to ask you to approve hiring those three gentlemen. I do have three retirements that are happening in the beginning of 2026, the beginning of the second quarter and a third one around mid-year. And so these are all hired for those first half of February.
I'll offer a new resolution 25-196, hire a three officers.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. Thanks, Sarah. Hi, Oliver.
There are two resolutions that I present this afternoon. Resolution 25-196, the 7-1-6 schedule and start this will continue the current practice of two stages at 8 p.m. that they will be moved at one day that they and also the commentary to the we call it
We okay with the times as this, guys?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll offer resolution 25-190, keep it the same.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
Next resolution is 25-191. Resolution to approve the appointment to the Savannah County Recreation District nation regarding applicants as good as related to the
There were some great resumes. Wow. I can't believe the interest that we had. Dave, I, I hope you don't mind. I was gonna kind of lean on you a little bit on this this evening because you're on that board. And what your thoughts of, you know, what you, kind of what your take would be and maybe let John and Jill kind of give us some insight scoop of
I've been on the board for, for, you know, quite a while there and it is a good board. I do want to just think that we have great recreation facilities out here. The Sage Art runs this. The board's aware of the applicants because Oliver had kept in touch with them. The board the board at the last meeting did not really discuss this, other than there were a bunch of applications. However, after the meeting, there was some chit chat, you know, going on and that at the meeting and, and, and there was a a strong feeling from those that expressed themselves is that Katie Fields, woman, many of them knew her, have worked on committees with her, you know, she's active in the community. I know her husband, Brandon, better than her because he almost knocked out one of my son's teeth in a basketball game when they were playing. It's cool, but Brandon's been a good friend to him. But, but I think that there's a, there is a number of people on the board that expressed very positive thoughts about her and that she can make a real contribution to the board. So, that would be my thoughts and I think you know, some thoughts of the board members there, this should be a great addition to us, although there were a number of good applications. So, that's, that would be where I would be coming from myself as a board member frankly, but also I think a number of the board members. Janet, Jill, any thoughts?
I, after looking through the list and knowing some of the people on there, I would agree that Katie Fields would probably be my choice, or not probably would be, is my choice because of her background and her experience in running her own business and that type of thing.
That's, that's, that was what was expressed, involvement in the community too.
Yes.
She was one of the ones that I liked, so it sounds like an easy one here.
Okay, good.
Then again, if we could thank everybody that submitted a resume, thank them for their interest, it's really overwhelming in a good way, so I'd like to offer resolution 25-191 to approve Katie Fields as our next appointment to Sage Art.
I'll second that.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. Okay, Dave?
Yes. Well, we have the fiscal agenda here, the, so you can see where our numbers are for through October. And actually, I think we're, we're doing nicely. Our our revenues are up. Our expenses actually are just holding nicely. They're a little bit below the percentile that we had projected that they might be at this point, so that's all good. Revenue's up some, expenses are down a bit. So, unless you have any questions, I don't really have anything to add to that. If not, and I do have a whole at year-end like this, we could get a whole plethora of resolutions and to move it along, because I know we have an executive session. I was thinking about just reading the resolution numbers without going into detail. The, the board has had a chance to look at it because they get emailed to them several days before the meeting, so if okay with you, I would just ask the board to approve resolution 25-198, 25-199. Resolution 25-201, resolution 25-202, resolution 25-197, resolution 25-193, and a resolution 25-194 and a resolution 25- oh, there it is, 194. What, yeah, so we have 25-192. And these are all again, year-end resolutions that we do. Almost all these resolutions were on a year ago, and that's the same thing. So, I'd ask you to approve these.
Questions? I'll offer a resolution, I'll offer David Simko's resolutions publicly.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And we've got excuse me here. Right there, we're moving along here. We got a few minutes. We can get, dive into the appointment of board members, please.
How you doing there? Open up the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I got that. That's not, that's coming up. Okay, spoke on, I got it.
I have four resolutions regarding the appointment of board members. First one is resolution 25-185, this is to reappoint Don Miller to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a five-year term.
Any questions on that? I'll offer resolution 25-185. Don Miller?
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
Next one is resolution 25-186, this is to reappoint Lynette Reichel as alternate board member on Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a one-year term.
Questions on Lynette?
The regular terms are five years and the alternates are one year?
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, you're good. Good question. I'll offer resolution 25-186, Lynette Reichel as the alternate Board of Zoning Appeals. Second.
Oh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
Resolution 25-187, this is to reappoint Robert Sable as a member of the zoning commission by a year term.
Questions on Bob? I'll offer a resolution 25-187 for Robert Sable. Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes.
And lastly, resolution 25-188, to reappoint Mary Hemeline as the alternate member of the zoning commission, one-year term.
Questions on Mary? I'll offer resolution 25-188, Mary Hemeline as alternative member to the zoning commission.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Generali?
Yes.
Mr. Molly?
Yes. And then I just have one thing for open discussion and reports. Does anybody want to speak at the Savannah Chamber in January, the State of the Union for Savannah Township? I got roped in, but I don't really, I don't like public speaking, so if you guys want to do that. Anybody? If we can, so, but I think they need to know, they need to know somebody that would want to speak, so I can get back to them tomorrow on an email. And Oliver's gonna, they go, you're gonna set everything up for whoever wants to speak, right?
Right.
But I've done it in the past. I just, I feel like it it's not, it's not, not about me. I'd rather have somebody else speak if they'd like to. Okay. Jill Johnson's gonna do it. There'll only be like 300 people there.
Oh, thanks.
Alrighty. Okay, so we've got a few minutes to, we'll just put this on ice for a few minutes and then we'll start the zoning commission at 5:30.
Get her back to my car.
I was concerned for you guys, like that lot of a little guy in Seattle to take on his responsibility. Or if you had problems with the this thing at the Sage Art.
Yeah. Okay. But what I just found out here, we can have the public hearing if we're done with our meeting at 5 o'clock, so if it's okay with you guys, you want to get started? 10 minutes early?
Wait just a little bit.
Yes, okay, great. Okay, hey Oliver, thanks. We'll get started. I didn't know that, because it didn't say 5, okay.
Do you know Lynette got a horn, one in Savannah? A couple months that she was helping with Dewey and I mean, 10.
There was a guy available.
He's gone out of the street. He sold that building downtown. He sold his business.
Oh, good trip.
So now he's Steve.
You're on. No, we didn't close it. We kept it open.
Okay.
Did we keep it open?
We didn't have one.
I didn't close any. I have to open.
Yeah, this is, ah, my bad. Okay.
Did we give the presentation first and then we open the public meeting normally, or? Well, usually I think the presentation should be
Part of the public meeting?
Part of the public hearing, yeah.
I'll open up the public hearing at 5:22 with regards to a zone change from A3 to R4 High Density Residential 9125 and 9251 West Central Avenue.
The properties are two undeveloped parcels on the southwest corner of Central and Chrissy Road in an area of just less than 40 acres. Each parcel is currently zone A3 agriculture in the central avenue overlay. Other A3 zone parcels are subject properties on all sides with agricultural uses to the north. On the opposite side of Central Avenue, vacant agricultural land and dwellings to the east, on the opposite side of Chrissy with Seacor Metro Parks and Bodies of the west and south. The applicant is seeking a zone change from A3 to R4 High Density Residential with the intent of developing the property as a multifamily project. Multifamily is permitted use within the central avenue overlay. Savannah Township Land Use Plan recommends to transitional uses for parcels on the south side of Central Avenue west of Centennial Road. These uses are defined as providing adequate buffers for areas with existing or potential commercial expansion into established residential areas. Multifamily is considered an adequate transitional use and the R4 zoning is recommended use. The Discounting Land Commission and Savannah Township Zoning Commission each voted unanimously to recommend approval to the township of the request of zone change. Should the subject request be approved, the project will adhere to the township's project plan review process, which entails the submission of fully entered site plans and landscaping plans to be reviewed by multiple state, county and township entities. Zoning staff recommends approval of the zone change request from A3 agriculture to R4 High Density Residential for the properties at 9125 and 9251 West Central Avenue for the following three reasons. One, the proposed zone change corresponds with the recommendation of the Township Land Use Plan for transitional uses south of Central and west of Centennial. Two, the proposed zone change should not create an unreasonable adverse impact upon existing nearby properties. Lastly, the proposed zone change is compatible with with the making and the applicant's
I'm ready. At this time, we'll continue to keep the public hearing open. As there, we've got a few people that have signed in. Austin Carman, Greg Feller and Julie Vitale?
I know.
Am I saying Vitale?
Yes.
Sorry if I misspelled that. Is there anybody else that wanted to sign in that is here? Okay. If you don't mind, I'll just go right down, just go right down the list here with Austin Carman. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Greg. Yeah.
Hi, Greg Fowler, Building Services Associate, 1683 with Liz Drive and Molly. Don't have a whole lot to add to what Daryl said. Obviously, it's all through the process. It's been recommended for approval by every step. It does, you know, meet the future land use plan. Like Daryl said, this is a transitional area. This use is defined as a proposed use in the transition area. The only thing I did want to point out is the land use plan for the transitional area calls out densities between 10 and 15 units per acre. And our proposal right now is for 8.9 units per acre to be our density. So, it would be just below what the, the proposed density is transitional, transitional use what the density is, you know, we're calling for. Again, like Daryl said, there really won't be any adverse impacts to the neighbors of the land directly west of us. And south, yeah, southwest are owned by the Metro Parks. So, there obviously won't be any development further west from us because all the land is owned by the Metro Parks. And then the project is located on Central Avenue, which offers, you know, good access to expressway businesses, that kind of thing. So, we do feel like it's an appropriate area for this development and we'd ask for approval.
Hey Greg, if you could, if you could for the, for the record, don't take offense, just your name, address for the tape, so we've got a record.
He gave it.
I did.
Oh, did you? Okay, alright, thanks.
No, he did, that's right.
And Austin, so with an operator, he's gonna talk a little bit about his company.
Okay. Austin, hey, would you get up there? I need your name and address.
My name is Austin Carman, 5100, Charles Court, Suite 101, Zionville, Indiana, 46077. I am the Vice President of Development at Kendall Properties. Kendall Properties is a family business started in the 1980s. Family of construction, build a suit office, self-storage, things like that. Got into exclusively multifamily in 2005. Jared Kendall's running the company now. And since he joined by 2010, that's, we've been doing exclusively multifamily since about that point in time. I joined the company in 2020 and I've been working on multifamily projects in the industry since, since I graduated from golf, so it's been starting to be a little bit of a time. We are excited about Savannah Township. This will be our 18th development in Michigan, Indiana, Western Ohio, Kentucky. This is all we do. We're specialized long-term builders. They build a quality and a long and I just want to introduce myself. I mean, this is a fantastic site. Gives us a lot of availability to work with natural features. These units will have both tree views on one side of the building. Will have a water feature looking the other way. Great amenities. I can list that out or if you'd like to throw up some detail. But most importantly, we don't want to give the opportunity with this much land of 40 acres to have a lower density type development and take advantage of the natural site feature. So, this is exciting and have brought somebody to the employment sectors, interstate access. It's been a great summer. I've been looking at the Toledo MSA for about 10 years and we're out there, decided to meet Marv and come to an agreement that we can, if we're approved to move forward, that we can work towards a formal development plan approval through the process and get going on construction later this fall. So, or should say, full late summer fall 2026. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Not at this time. Thanks, Austin.
Thank you.
Julie Vitale?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Julie Vitale. Our address is 2349 Timber Viewport. We live in Stonewall Subdivision, which is south Chrissy from the proposed project. I am here today just as a concerned citizen. I am not opposing. I understand that there is a need for additional housing units. My concern as the township considers this request is have you look ahead as you consider adding this number of cars to that area. The the necessity to add lighting, for example. There is not even a street light at the corner of Central and Chrissy. That is a very dark corridor. It's 55 miles per hour. When you cross Central Avenue west of Centennial, it narrows from two lanes to one. So, there is always jockeying and position with semis because you have to decide whether you're gonna have time to get over. The street light right now at Central and Centennial does not have the countdown that gives you the amount of time before the light turns yellow, which I think is another significant safety risk. So, my concern as this moves forward is lighting. And to be honest, just as a citizen, I'm not sure how you could possibly put a, a development like this in that area and not widen Central Avenue. Right now, there is a very short left turn lane. If you're heading west on Central to turn onto Chrissy, there is not room for many cars to turn left. And just east of that intersection, where her road goes north, there's also a very short right turn. There is no traffic light at that intersection either, as you're probably all well aware. As I read this, and I may be reading it incorrectly, when I look at this drawing, it looks as if the entrance to this new development would be on Chrissy. And Chrissy right now, very narrow, two lanes, 50 miles an hour, with ditches on each side. So, I would also think that if that is the proposal, that is So, I would also think that if that is the proposal, that would require significant changes to the lighting. I can't imagine how you would not need a turn lane to turn into the development. And I'm also thinking, I have grandchildren that attend Central Trail and Timberstone, which I would assume children that live in that development will be going to those schools as well. And I can understand why people would want to put a development in that area, because it's a great school system. And, but you're just getting a school bus, in and out on Chrissy, I can't imagine navigating that turn into the development without additional lanes. On a personal note, my husband was involved in a traffic incident at the intersection of Central Avenue at her road on October 30th. Walked away with minor injuries, had to, the other driver, his car was totaled, but it just brought home to us the danger there, 55 miles an hour. I don't know if any one of you have been in a situation where you had west on, on Central Avenue, there is a great deal of truck traffic. Whether they're avoiding the turnpike, I don't know, but it is not uncommon during the day, coming and going, for there to be five or six semis lined up at the traffic light at Central and Centennial, going east or west. And that I think would significantly be a safety concern, as you're adding housing units there, and you've got people coming and going, or school, just about their daily activities. And I'm just concerned, and as you consider this project, you also take into account what I would think would be a significant expenditure for the township to make the necessary improvements to the infrastructure, to make what looks like a lovely development, safe for everybody, and to make it fit into the community. Those are my concerns.
Great job, thank you for explaining that tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not at this time, I think we close the public hearing and then discuss.
Isn't there somebody else?
We would, those are the three.
Okay.
Discuss now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I?
You can call me Neil, it's not Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Neil, may I?
Yeah, please.
Always.
Thank you, Julie.
Again, this were to be approved, it would go through project plan review. So, being on Central Avenue, ODOT would review it, Chrissy is a county road, so Lucas County Engineers would review it. There most certainly is gonna be some kind of road improvements required, whether it's deceleration lane, a traffic signal, widening road, whatever. And all that would be at the expense of the developer, township, or the county, or the state, be on the public floor, be the developer. So, all that would come up through project plan review, the county and the state reviews that, and Greg, I don't wanna add any more to that, but in a nutshell, that's.
Very much awesome, second.
I don't know, as far as lighting on the sites, is that something maybe you think you'd address?
I think, yeah. The project, I mean, part of the plan review process, but at least internally for us, but the site will go through a photometric study, so we'll have an expert engineer, actually, I think we brought, with somebody who we hired second from Grand Scope, but they'll look at the lighting, and give a lighting plan, and they'll look at how it reflects, and then they'll spec the lights based on what that study says, and then we, that's what we'll purchase and sell.
Thanks, Austin. So, hey, Julie? Here's the downside of being in the township, living in the township. Now, this is true, because it's so hard, we can't control, we can only look at zoning, we can't, as much as I'd love to say, and I agree, that it's a busy area there, I mean, we had, we had a zone change last year for a car wash, and there's 30,000 trucks that run down Central every day. But as much as I could, as much as I say, well, I can't vote based on that thought process, I can't control that, it goes into different layers of government, and that's the down, if we're in a city, we have some of those controls, and in township, we can only look at zoning. So, I just, I, I'm so thankful that you came, and I just wanted to kinda give you an idea where kind of the box that I personally am in on this, because I know you're, I appreciate all your issues that you're dealing with there, but we have to look at, in township government, we have to look at just the zoning, so. Go ahead, Greg.
And I appreciate your comments about the traffic, and we understand, you know, the county engineers office will most, most, I'm positive, will require a traffic study. So, we're gonna have to do a whole traffic study that will include Chrissy and Central, you know, analyzing traffic coming in, traffic coming out, how much traffic's generated, and then that study will be reviewed by Lucas County Engineers Office and my OPA, since we're, since we're on Central. There will be, like you said, there will be plenty of layers of, I guess, control over the traffic, and analyzing and making sure it's appropriate. So, I just wanna make sure that that will be looked at as part of the, part of the site process.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions, comments from the board?
I just would say that the concern with the increased traffic, something that I was thinking too, but, you know, I think Greg has addressed that, that was one of the things I was thinking at the beginning of this presentation also.
Thanks for your comments. All right, we'll close the public hearing at 5:38. And I'll offer Resolution, or, I was almost ready to hire three more police officers. We already got that handled. I'll offer Resolution to approve the zone change from A3 to R4 High Density Residential for the properties located 9B125, 9251 West Central Avenue.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Good luck, guys. Yeah. All right, we're going into executive session here at 5:39, and in the executive session, we'll have the, us, the elected officials, administrator, and the two fire chiefs at 5:39.
Yep, I'll give you a second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Genowine?
Yep, yep. Yes. And we're not taking any action this evening. I know you got that figured out.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we're back from executive session at 6:44 with no action, or, wait, 6:44.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, no, come out, you didn't come out, second.
Okay, John. Ms. Johnson? Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, and no action being taken this evening?
Right.
I'll make a motion to be adjourned at 6:25.
Second. I'll give Ms. Johnson?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Genowine?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Alrighty, thanks, everybody.